Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I read adjourn the regular meeting of the Menifee City Council from closed session. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember August, Councilmember Denver, Deputy Mayor Edgerton,
[inaudible 00:01:14]
Councilmember Furman, and Mayor Mann.
Here.
Thank you.
And who do we have for words of inspiration tonight?
Pastor Rex Wigno is a no-show.
Councilmember Denver, would you like to give us some words of inspiration? Thank you.
Please rise. Dear Lord, we come to you today, working for our city. We all are here for one purpose, and that's to do what's right for the citizens of Menifee. We ask your blessings on this event, and we ask that you hold us close to you. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Thanks, sir. Councilmember August, would you lead us in the pledge?
Please join us in the pledge. Mr. Flag, can I give you that?
[inaudible 00:01:59] The flag of the United States of America, and to the great glory where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Madam, Ms. Biggs, do we have a report out from closed session from this evening?
Yes, we do this evening. The council met in closed session regarding a claim received from Southern California Gas Company, and conferred with legal counsel on that, and voted on the motion of Councilmember August, seconded by Councilmember Denver. At the time, there were two members absent, Councilmember Furman and Deputy Mayor Edgerton, and the vote was three zero to reject the claim, and so it will be rejected.
Thank you very kindly. It appears we have no presentations this evening on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion. Are there any changes to the meeting minutes from December 18th? Hearing none, those minutes are ordered. Are there any modifications to the agenda this evening?
No, sir, as posted.
Thank you very kindly. The agenda is approved. On to public comments. We'll take the first speaker, please.
Yes, sir. Rose Marie Elwright.
Mayor Mann, just saying with counsel, and yes, I would like to beg the city's indulgence to possibly consider a signage ordinance that would help control the amount of distraction that's going on in the shopping center area bordered by Cherry Hills, Sun City Boulevard, McCall and Bradley. All of these business places that are sticking their signs in the landscape around there, I find that, as I'm driving, and I think I'm a pretty savvy driver, but all of those signs, to me, are a distraction. And if there's any way the city could develop ordinance, we look, we're beginning to look pretty slummy down there, with flags flying and signs all over the place advertising businesses. And on the same note, I know a lot of people will join me with this, in the unsolicited newspapers that are appearing in our driveways, nobody wants, nobody picks them up, they're left to deteriorate, and again, that's something that I think could be an ordinance controlling that type of distribution. We have a lot of our seniors that consider that as a sign that nobody's home, and when people are starting to put all of the advertisements, sticking them in their doorways, that again, we've had people that suspect that people are watching to see all of this stuff piling up, and that makes them an easy target for anybody that wants to do a break-in. So just, you know, if there's any way that some ordinance could be developed to control this type of activity, I know the seniors from Sun City Civic Association would appreciate it. Your indulgence.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to point, I strongly agree with you about those newspapers and the fact that if somebody's not there, there can be a tip-off for somebody if they continue to deliver them. But I would defer to Ms. Biggs. I do think, under federal law, we may be precluded from writing an ordinance that tells them they can't deliver those papers, but I'll defer to Ms. Biggs.
There are certainly --
Happy to provide the space.
There are First Amendment concerns whenever you're talking about media distribution and that kind of thing. However, the city does have certain abilities to control the time, place, and manner of speech, but we would have to take a look at that in this context. It depends on many things. Certainly, if there's a trespass and that kind of thing, there may be an issue there, but it would take some time to take a look at that.
Okay. Mr. Denver?
On the same note, maybe we could have a look at the fact whether you can, it's my opinion that those signs are already illegal in Menifee, and we just don't enforce down there for reasons that are confusing to me. So I would ask that the attorney evaluate what was just said as to whether it already violates the ordinances, and if that is so, why aren't we enforcing them in the middle of Sun City?
Point of order, just so we're clear on what my question was to Ms. Biggs. I wasn't referring to the signs.
I was.
How I was, and I know you were, I was referring to throwaway newspapers in a driveway. That's very tough, from my understanding, to control, because they've taken a lot of the options away from us as a city.
There are, there are some things that can be controlled, but there are many that are cannot, cannot. So, as I said, we can give you a review of what's possible.
Mr. August?
I'm familiar with Ms. Elwright speaking about, the ones that I saw this week were the Menifee Buzz, and I believe that's a paper we're associated with, so, other than that, okay, and as far as the signs go, in the commercial part, we had this argument, not an argument, but a discussion about it a year ago. Remember, we were talking with Giovanni's Restaurant, we were, Mr. Furman was involved in it. We're getting a lot, we get a lot of backlash and frustration from the proprietorships in those businesses about it, and I, and, like I said, we had conversations about it a year ago, and actually, we haven't really, we really haven't came to any resolutions on it yet. It's a very, very difficult issue, because as Ms. Biggs said, there are issues concerned, and it was a huge backlash from people about when we went in and we questioned whether or not people could have this sign or that sign on their property. So, it's not something we haven't addressed, but we haven't resolved it yet, so I think we can maybe put a little more effort into that.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm just clarifying, the Menifee Buzz, we're, our relationship with them is limited to paying for advertising. That's it. Secondarily, on the sign issue and the ordinance, now that the general plan's done, we had planned on updating our sign ordinance, and we were waiting for that. So, we're kind of in line with, with where we're moving forward to, and we, we had met with several businesses in several different areas, and of course, the garage sale signs and all those things, so we're trying to work on all those at the same time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next speaker, please.
Ann Pika.
Can you hear me?
Good evening.
Doesn't sound like this is on.
Oh, doesn't.
It's not, it's not on. It's on. It's on. Try again. Hello. Jonathan, can you check under those, please? Thank you. It's probably worth its weight, Lucy. I'm giving.
In the meantime, can we use the microphone, the mobile mic, and just hand this, leave it up there on the podium?
Okay, the three minutes haven't started.
No, they have not started. No. Can you do a mic, a mic test, just to speak, say hello or something, so we know we?
Hello.
There we go.
Hello.
All right.
Okay. I didn't know we were having discussions, full-blown discussions in the three minutes, but apparently, we do now. I've been before the city council before, speaking on behalf of 600 senior citizens who live in Sun City, Homosia, regarding a public health and safety problem that needed immediate attention. Not only did I present the problem, but gave the simple correction to eliminate this danger to the public health and safety of the residents. Clearly, this has fallen on deaf ears with this city council. No feedback on this problem, no action taken to correct the danger to the public at large. I contacted the city manager, Johnson, and Jonathan Smith stated on the record that he had gone to the site, saw an easy fix with the lights at McCollin Encanto, and had turned it over to the city manager to prioritize. Mr. Johnson responded with an email that he had sent, send it to Mr. Smith to prioritize, and had to request the money from the council to fix the lights, and it was not in the budget. This is a bunch of BS. As I have read Mr. Johnson's contract, and he clearly has the authority to prioritize and allocate the money for his, this fix, whether in or out of the budget, and it is well under the $50,000 allowed to do so without the council's permission. So what say you city council members? What is wrong with your city manager, who has no problem finding funding, is available in the city capital project fund, for $64,580 for a unification project, but cannot find funding for $5,000 or less to fix a public health and safety problem that has already caused one death? What is with the Public Health and Safety Committee members, Greg August and John Denver? Both live in the area of Sun City, and are well aware of the death at this intersection. What action have either taken to protect the public from another death at this intersection? None. Mr. August and Mr. Denver both should be removed from the Public Health and Safety Committee. We need people who truly are working to protect the public health and safety of the people. And Mr. August, you had better stop bragging on the record at city council meetings of how you are continuing to violate the Brown Act by having closed-door meetings with two or more members of the city council. Someone is going to download those videos and turn them over to the DA for prosecution. If this city council does not act positively to correct this dangerous situation, then we are going to take the same action as Hammett, and that is a recall on all of you. Thank you.
Ms. Biggs, just for a point of clarification, for the benefit of the public and us, when it comes to public comment time. Yeah, sorry. Under the Brown Act, we're, we're allowed limited interaction with the public in terms of matters that have already been discussed, decided, or portrayed in the public domain, and as, and we can refer matters to staff for answer to the publics when, when, when speakers or speaker state things that aren't necessarily accurate. Is that true?
That's entirely correct. You can respond to questions to a certain degree. The important thing is not to engage in a widespread discussion
Like as a public hearing.
Of something that is not on the agenda, so.
Thank you very kindly. Yeah. Next speaker, please.
Michael Garcia.
On the last council meeting, a councilman tried to act like he wanted to put the problem we are having with 29135 Leon Lane on the agenda, asking if it was too late. Why does there need to be an act when we all knew this was not going to happen? Another council member tells the citizens of Menifee, there's a process that it needs to go through, and these things take time. Time? Well, I had been fighting this illegal setup of a commercial company in an agricultural zone for over a year, starting with several calls to code enforcement, even to the point when we were told 29135 Leon Lane had been given notice to stop operation in 30 days, only to be told later that the city council had a meeting and would let it continue. The first time I contacted Mayor Mann was on July 8th, 2013. We were told to go to a council meeting, and it would be taken care of. While you all know, we have been up here several times, and nothing has yet to be done. We have been told that they have applied for a conditional use permit, and they have some kind of business license, yet they tell the district attorney that they have neither, and the owner has been cited, yet he is still allowed to operate his business. After living on this property for almost 10 years, we get a citation from animal control as our dogs are a nuisance. Well, on the citation, it states, "Another will follow in 14 days if this is not corrected, and to avoid court action, we must pay $20 per animal." Why is it animal control may have more authority than code enforcement? I have called code enforcement four times since the last meeting to have the light issue taken care of, as they are not shielded and lights directed downward as a city ordinance requires? Or did the city of Menifee give the owners of 29135 a license to break any code? Again, I will demand that this be put on the agenda, so it can be dealt with. Is it fair to other contractors who do the right thing not to be able to compete with his prices, because his overhead is lower? Doesn't the city itself lose, as we all know, commercial property goes for more? This needs to stop. It is not the right that at 5:45, this company starts its work. If this was your neighbor, this would have gone, not gone on. The city of Menifee needs to address this now.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, this, Mr. City Manager, this, this is in my district, and my concern about this particular incident, it's just not in reference to the gentleman at the mic, but I've seen several situations where it seems to drag on and on and on, in that we're not communicating some way with the citizen. They don't seem to, if there is a, is a real reason why this isn't being addressed more promptly, it hasn't been made clear to them, or it doesn't seem to me that it's been made clear to them. And that's, that's my, that's my concern. It's conceivable, there's nothing more we can do, but part of it is, I think, the environment we're in today, nationwide, people have a distrust. They, they want to know, is this guy next door, is he getting some kind of favoritism? That's what a lot of the people in the audience ask. Why does this go on and on and on, and nothing's happening? The same thing is asked, you know, by that former highway patrolman on Sweetwater Canyon, and that, that's been going on for two years, so, this is our, this is my concern. I just want, I, I don't mind the guy, you know, I want him to come to the mic and express his concerns, and I have no problem with the fact that if legitimately, there is some reason why we can't get to it more quickly, but I want to make sure he and other citizens, when that happens, it's very clear to them why. Right now, they think something's funny in Denmark.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. And in regards to Mr. Garcia and his continual issues with his neighbor, at, at times in general, we'll just say, because talking about a specific code enforcement case and actions against somebody, and the time that it takes, and the ability for the person who's receiving the action against them to call an attorney and litigate, which is pretty much where we're headed. So, I'll turn the rest over to the city attorney, if she wants to make a general statement, but without giving specifics on specific cases, because we're not allowed to do that by law. It's progressing in a way that, that's not very quick, because when lawyers and civil actions get tied up together, it tends to expand the timeframe to actually handle something. In general, we can go out to any business that's not acting appropriately, and provide them a notice of violation, which is a notice that they're going to have to pay a fine or correct the action. Those things can continue over time, and to the point where the business has a very large sum of money that they're owed to the city. But as far as shutting somebody down, physically going out there, that's a different situation that I don't think most people understand. There's always, unfortunately, a respectful disagreement to how things work through the, through the system and through the laws that we have. So, if you can add any more to that.
Sure.
I'd appreciate it.
The, the goal generally, as I think all of you are aware, for code enforcement, is to obtain voluntary compliance. It's to communicate with the property owner in a way that communicates what the standard is that is being ignored or violated, and to encourage compliance with that law. And that's done initially by going out and identifying issues. Certainly, when a complaint comes in, first of all, the complainant is, is a confidential person, and that information as to who complained is not made available to anyone until such time as everything goes, goes forward. But once the city has a complaint, and they investigate, they have to go out, they have to see if it's there, they have to determine from the city's standpoint whether they believe the violation has occurred. If they do that, then there is a warning process, and there is a citation process. And there are things that are set out where there are time periods for cure, so that when the citation is issued, there's a time period to cure. All of those things have to be taken one step at a time, and it is sometimes lengthy. The goal, again, is voluntary compliance. The interests and the privacy, privacy interests of the property owner, or the person who's responsible for the violation, have to be considered, because this is a governmental action against an individual, and certain rights arise when that action is taken. So, there is an interplay there that requires confidentiality, that doesn't permit, you know, everything to be posted on the website as to what's happening this week on this property. It has to be handled confidentially. So, it, but it is a process, and there, there is a process underway, and.
Well, I would just also point out, speaking generally, when we have people coming before the mic complaining continuously about something, and they feel it's not being responded to, and then subsequently, some other unit in the city cites them, then obviously, in their mind, there is a concern, is this retaliatory? I just certainly don't see it that way, but I do think that when something like that happens, it puts a heavier weight on us, it's incumbent upon us, to make sure that they don't believe that or feel that way. I believe that's our responsibility.
That, that is certainly a positive observation. On the other hand, if there is a complaint that's filed by someone else, again, that complainant would be held in confidence. So it limits the ability of the city to say, "This isn't retaliatory, we didn't do it, so-and-so turned you in." You know, we can't do that. So that's where that is.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Josie Garcia.
I'm sorry, I do believe that this man has favoritism here, because if all the laws or codes are being broken, I can't cross a red light and not get a ticket. I've broken the law. So I get a ticket. If my car is parked in the wrong place, my car gets towed away. I, I, you don't give me two months to leave my car there. It's illegal parking. But because, and you know, I don't even care who knows that we turned him in, it doesn't need to be confidential. They know who's done it. This place is sitting next to my house. I have to look at it if I go outside every day. I do not go outside every day. I've had therapy, I've had all kinds of stuff, because it's gotten me so upset that somebody can come and break the law, the law of California, the law of Menifee, and get away with it, because it's going to take time? Does it take time to take somebody who killed somebody and to give them the death penalty? No, they stay in jail till you do it. And my city is not doing this. We are not being taken care of. I feel like I live in a slum. I had a choice between buying three acres or a beautiful house. Okay, we went for the three acres. We can fix up the house, but I can't fix the three acres that are next to me, who this morning, before 5:45, they were jumping toilets inside of their trash condenser, or that big crash trash thing. They were jumping out their trash. So somebody told us, "Call the police, that's against the law." So what does my husband do? He calls the police. The police come and they talk to my husband, then they go talk to him. He shows them some kind of paperwork, supposedly from the city, and then the policeman comes back, and he says, "If you don't stop harassing this man, he could sue you." We have had code enforcement, probably every code enforcement that you have, out at our house, and three of them have come back and said, "They're breaking the law. Don't give up, but don't use our name." And if you can't tell me that those people are worried about their jobs, they're worried about their jobs. But I'm, we're, my family is the only one where it sits, where you can do it. My dogs could not get anywhere near a human being, the way our house is, is situated on top of a hill. You'd have to walk on top of the hill for my dogs to get near you. Boaming at the mouth. Now I know who did that.
Josie, that's your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Those are all the commenters under public comments.
Thank you kindly. On to council member updates and comments. Let's see. Go ahead, Mr. August, you go up first.
I want to do, say, how do I turn this one? I want to do, share an experience with all of you that I had over the Christmas holiday season. First of all, I hope you all had a Merry Christmas, and I hope you're going to look forward to a happy, safe, and prosperous New Year. I, I attended with a Santa's Workshop out in Coyle Valley, and because of Julie Woodruff, our Director Administrative Service, she just wanted to give you a little background on it, and then talk a little bit about my experience out there. It'll take about a minute or so. This was the eighth year for Santa's Workshop, which is organized and led by the Menifee Valley Community, Cupboard, Cal Fire, and Spark of Love, Lake Menifee Women's Club, the Rotary Club, US Bank, Menifee Valley Chamber of Commerce, numerous local merchants and residents, as well as, from my experience, it happened on the 21st. I've heard a lot about Santa's Workshop, and I hadn't had the opportunity to go out, but I took the opportunity to go out this year. And my visit to Santa's Workshop on December the 21st at the elementary school, I was given a tour and background of the event by Dorothy Willens, the CCO of the Menifee Chamber of Commerce. Dorothy walked me through the entire course of the program. It's a carefully and meticulously planned activity, where expertise and management, and just the timing and crowd control required for the event could not have been more underestimated or underappreciated. Dorothy informed me this event was six months in the planning, and, and based on my observations, I believe it. I've heard about this event, as I said before, but ever have, having witnessed it for myself, I never realized the enormity of the commitment, the planning effort, and dedication of so many people in this city and from outside the city, in providing a very special day, primarily for the children of lower-income families in our city and the local area, numbering more than 1,000 children. It's a several-hour experience for the children, with multiple planned activities with several, at several different stations, in support of the main feature of the program, where the children were allowed to choose two toys, walk into this big auditorium with several thousand toys, and they were able to choose two different toys. Each of the 1,000 children were allowed to do that, and these were high-quality toys, bicycles, skateboards, and things like that. These toys were, like I said, were provided by Cal Fire and the Spark of Love and merchants in the area, and with private donations from homeowners' associations and things like that. In my mind, after, after witnessing the event and taking part in it to a certain extent, this, this was one of those moments that's probably a life-lasting and memorable experience for these families and the children. We all have our special memories of Christmas, and this probably, for most of those children, was going to be one of them. And thanks to everyone who participated in this event, just for a couple of notables here, I'd like to thank Debbie Mannion from the, the Menifee Lakes Women's Club, Dorothy Willens, CEO, Don Prather from the Cupboard, and a special thanks to Lynda Denver. And she sat there, usually next to Mr. Denver, but he was ill this year, and I'll let him talk about it briefly, but she was sat there and with a warm and gracious smile, and entertained 1,000 children on that Saturday, and I want to thank your wife for that, Mr. Denver. Also, Mike Castier is from the bank. The Paloma football team was also there, the Menifee, many Menifee residents, city finance department, people, elves from our, from our city, Terry Willoughby, Margarita Caneo, Wendy Welsh, and Crystal Robinson, and many students. Robinson, and many students from the Mount Hacendo Junior College. So I was very, very impressed with this event, and I wish I had gotten to it sooner, but the city can be very, very thankful. We have people in our city doing things like this for needy people.
Thank you, Mr. August. Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recently had an opportunity to speak with some people over at Oddie Murphy Ranch, and some people who are interested in trails, et cetera, and it's got my interest piqued. And in a general sense, wanted to point out that it's really important. I think all of us would agree, the more people we can get involved in subjects that are complex, that's what we want to do. When people want to integrate trails throughout a city that interconnect with trails outside the city, then it's really important that one is sensitive to everybody concerned, whether it's the developer, certainly the Pachanga Tribal Council, who has artifacts they need to protect. They certainly want to be involved and aware. And it's important to know that nobody can speak for this city. I can't. No council person can. The mayor can't. The city manager can't. When you set policy, it takes three people. Could be any three, but it takes three people on the council to set that policy. So I, in speaking to any number of people, I, when it comes to setting agendas for the next period, I wish to put forth that we need to reopen and reconsider parks, recreation, and trails, so that we can begin to take a broader perspective of what we're viewing there. I just throw that out. I'll be bringing that up at that time. Secondly, I think that in this era, I notice on the news, maybe as some of you have known, that we not only have banks too big to fail, but we have banks too big to judge. We have banks that were involved in the 2009 fiasco that impacted all of America and impacted all of the world. And there are people within the Justice Department who want to go after some of the individuals. And yet, there has been conversation, as most of you know, that they're fearful that if you go after, like the Bank of America and some individuals on it, you could affect the economy. And so therefore, maybe there are people too big to judge. And I find that when people hear things like that, they just get extremely agitated, frustrated, and angry. But the point is, here in Menifee, we can't do anything about the national problem, but we can do something about Menifee. And I do think, I have spoke about this while I was the mayor, I made it part of a state-of-the-city message. I think there are some things that we can do to be more transparent when it comes to campaign financing. And I also want to bring that up as an agenda item for our next session, and I wanted to explain that a little bit before I did, and when I bring it up, I'll just be asking for a second. I'll be glad to have a vote of the council on it, if that's wished for.
Mr. Edgerton?
Are you bringing that up? Mr. Mayor, is Mr. Edgerton bringing that up now, or are you going to do it later?
No, I think the mayor would expect us to bring that up at a time when what's going to be on the next agenda, although that's up to the mayor.
And/or we do it now at the end of the meeting, where we ask for it, and maybe, given the fact that we do have a strategic planning session coming up, Mr. Johnson, towards the end of this month, that those two particular items actually go on that agenda for substantial discussion. I think that'd be very appropriate. Would you agree with that?
Well, actually, I just prefer to put it on the next meeting, the next agenda. I don't think they'll need that much discussion. If they do, then we can proceed to push it on to the strategic planning session. But I mean, I'll make that, I'll ask for that second now, if, on both issues, to be put on next agenda.
It's appropriate to ask for it now. If you want to do it now. Yeah. Mr. Johnson?
I apologize, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I'm unclear of what you're going to ask staff to bring back at the next agenda.
I'm going to be requesting of the council to review the concept of the Parks, Recreation, and Trails Commission. In other words, to bring about, again, that commission and reactivate the commission, and to be discussing how we would go about that. Also, being particularly sensitive that when you bring a subject like that up, it does send signals out to people in the community and would want to especially emphasize that this city is, for example, the Pachanga Tribal Council. We very much want to have a good relationship with them. We're very sensitive to the fact that they are very concerned about this, so that anything that we would do along those lines would be in cooperation, not only with the Pachanga Tribal Council, but with, for example, the Oddie Murphy Ranch and their group. But it's very important to bring in our own people, the people from Menifee who are most affected and involved, and that's the people who are involved with these trails, have horses themselves, and have worked on this program. And so my point is to hopefully have that reactivated in the next meeting, at which time we'll need to discuss, well, how do you appoint members, et cetera, et cetera.
Mr. Johnson, first.
Completely understand. So the concept would be to reconvene the Trails Committee, or a Trails Committee of some kind?
Correct.
Knowing the executive consultant, Shawn Nelson, will be bringing a report on February 5th regarding community services, parks, and recreation, and the bifurcation of our city on February 5th. So just to put that out there.
Correct. And in fact, it was in part in anticipation of that, that I wanted to motivate a situation where we can be getting winded up, these people that are in part going to be responsible for having input, and so that they'll be able to hit the ground running.
So, Mr. August, you had?
I just wanted to confirm, from my understanding, that it was a committee and not a commission. And whenever it's appropriate, I'll go ahead, and if there is a motion, second that motion.
Before we do that, I would just like to interject a couple of thoughts for historical, corporate historical perspective for the council and the audience and the staff, as I understand the history of how the whole Trails Committee came about. We do have a Trails Committee. It's standing. It's just inactive right now. They did marvelous work when it came to input to the general plan, and their input got codified and adopted by us in the general plan. So I think that there is a nexus between trails in our city and a parks and recs, or a community services function down the road. And so if you, I think this is, I think it's absolutely a fantastic discussion that needs to happen, if you would agree to just hold off on that until February 5th, to where Mr. Nelson can present his findings of the whole enchilada, so to speak, of which the Trails piece would be part of it, and then we can discuss at that workshop, or subsequent to his report, how we want to go forward. Would that be acceptable to you on February 5th?
Is the 5th a council meeting?
It is, I believe.
Yes. First council meeting in February.
First council meeting in February, right?
All right. My concern is I want to make sure that the people who would be involved, the people who would likely to be on the committee, have an opportunity to have input, because they've been working with any number of people, and I know that at least from some of them, their perception is that they've been deactivated, that they really aren't involved anymore. And I think everyone here on the council would agree, we want them involved. And so if that, if the 5th is a council meeting, then I would defer it to the 5th, rather than create a situation where there is some concern on keeping the council together.
Would that be acceptable to you, Mr. August?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Fantastic, then. Is that enough guidance from us, Mr. Johnson?
Absolutely. We'll be ready for a report and to explain not only what, well, not explain, but give some options as to what the Trails Committee could be involved in, and I know interconnection of the Trails is a major piece of that. With the Trails Committee, I was actually the staff liaison to that committee while I was working through the general plan, and we kind of always dreamed and talked about a master trails plan. And I think that that could be a big part of that, and a big part of our community services department as we move forward. So I'm definitely in favor of that.
Well, some of the people in the community who are involved, and especially involved with the parks, recreation, and trails concept, will not only be informed, it'll give them a chance to provide input at that meeting, and I would expect that they would probably be here and have something to say themselves.
We would welcome the input at that meeting and beyond.
Right. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very kindly. Mr. August, or, excuse me, Mr. Furman, or Mr. Denver, do you have any updates? I have five. However, Mr., before I go through my list, Mr. Johnson, were you going to talk about AB 677 at all during manager comments?
I was only going to bring it up in reference that it's the newest bill, and that there is a, there's a conference call set for Monday with the Gonsalves Group. So I'll defer to you.
All right. I'll go ahead, and since I asked, thank you for that, by the way. Okay, so the first thing I'd like to share with the public is, number one, I, like many up here, I attended several holiday events since last meeting on December 18th, and it seemed like there was one every day, every other day, and sometimes you just can't get to all of them. But all the events were well-attended. The organizers did a marvelous job. The city was involved in most of them, and, you know, Menifee's a great place to live. All these events that have been happening for years, they just continue to happen because of volunteerism in the community, and I'm just happy to be a part of it. So I was able to meet some of those. There are so many, I can't even list them. I mean, last count, there were nine. So on to what I asked Mr. Johnson. Many of you heard about SB 56. SB 56 was the bill introduced by Senator Roth and Emerson on the recovery of our motor vehicle licensing fee money that was taken from us by Governor Brown back in 2011. Well, a new bill has been introduced in the Assembly, AB 677, by Assemblyman Fox, Democratic Assemblyman from Thousand Oaks. This is a sister bill to SB 56. The language of the bill mirrors exactly what's in SB 56. And what this is politically is a, Pro Tem Steinberg in the Senate and the Speaker of the Assembly have agreed to advance this issue jointly, along parallel tracks in both chambers. The benefit to us is, we're going to get a quicker resolution, and whether we get the money or whether we get it restored to us this time, it's just one more example that people are working for us, and we'll try to get that money restored. On to something that happened today. I sit on the RCTC for the city. I represent the city for the commission, Riverside County Transportation Commission. Today, we approved 14, the final piece of the funding puzzle for the Newport Road Interchange, $14.6 million to fund the Newport Road Interchange. And the action that was taken by the commission today unanimously, 31 to 0, will pave the way for that to begin as early as April 2014. And when I begin, when I say begin, I don't mean, you know, shovels in the ground and bulldozers, et cetera, but other preliminary things that go forward in an RFP. So that was a really positive thing, and there are so many people to thank for that, between Mr. Johnson, Mr. Smith, Shawn Nelson, the members of the council, past and present, who served on the commission, Mr. Edgerton as well, and those at the WR COG, and everybody who had a hand in identifying this funding. This closes that chapter for the funding on Newport Road Interchange, so it's a really positive thing. I want to give a very, very tremendous thank you to Assemblyman Melendez's staff. Assemblywoman Melendez approached the city before the holiday and asked for us to have a meeting with her, to see what issues were there for us to discuss with her and try to advance an agenda or help mitigate any concerns that we had with things that happened in the past. And one of the things that we discussed with her was the Romaland Master Drainage Project, also known as Line A. Back in 2010, Menifee Project Line A, Romaland Homeland Master Drainage Project, was rated the number-one inland region recovery project between San Bernardino County and Riverside County by Governor Schwarzenegger's Secretary of Business, Transportation, and Housing. And what that did is that that put us in line for American Recovery and Reinvestment Act dollars that were approved by Congress at the time and signed into law by President Obama. Despite the job creation and the economic output of that project, this project has not had one dime flow to it, and it is a truly shovel-ready project. And so Assemblywoman Melendez's staff has made some inquiries up in Sacramento, and an actual investigation has been opened up into why the Department of Business, Transportation, and Housing did not fund this project. So I'd like to publicly thank Assemblywoman Melendez for looking into that on behalf of the city of Menifee. We're very grateful. Hopefully, we'll have a positive outcome to that. The last thing I'd like to mention in this, in council member updates at this time, is tomorrow morning is, if you recall, a few months back, we approved a MOU with the city and the Chamber of Commerce for cooperative events in the city over the coming year. And one of those things is the Business Roundtable. Tomorrow morning, Councilmember Furman and I are going to meet in here for coffee for about an hour with some home-based business owners to take input from the community on what they think that the city of Menifee can do, is doing better, or from a customer service standpoint, or where we can deregulate some things to make businesses better for them. And I've asked the other, I've asked staff to engage the rest of the council to come back and join me in one of those meetings in February. Mr. August, if you can make it, that's the small businesses, non-home-based. And in March, it's the realtors, Mr. Denver. I'd like you, and then in April, deputy mayor for the restaurateurs, if you could join us for that, to take input from the business community, so that we can then come together and formulate some plans or policies, or add things to our economic development strategy if we need to. So it's a preliminary program. We're just taking input from the business community. That's all it's about. We're not spending any taxpayer dollars. This is a chamber function, and we're just using the chamber as a conduit for us to take input from the business community, from those selected businesses. So that concludes my council member updates for tonight. On to the consent calendar. Do we have any speakers on the consent calendar, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ann Pika?
I object to this resolution number 14-351, adopting a finding of public convenience and necessity for the sale of beer and wine at the 99 cents-only store at 26100 Newport Road. There has been no public hearing before this city council on this matter. Having a public hearing before the Planning Commission, which is only an advisory committee to the city council, does not eliminate the responsibility of this city council to hold a public hearing. The public has a right to a public hearing before the city council and give their input on this matter. This should be an agenda item, which would allow time from the public to speak on the matter, not part of the consent calendar. I don't know what you guys are trying to pull here, but notifying the businesses near or within 100 feet of the store and running a notice in the newspaper does not allow you the right, as elected officials, to deny the public a right to a public hearing on this matter before the city council. And since when is it a necessity to sell beer and wine in a 99-cent store?
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on the consent calendar?
No, sir.
Mr. August.
I'm going to pull 10.6 for discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Furman is pulling item 10.6 for the purpose of discussion. May I have a motion on the balance of the consent agenda?
I'm just being clear, 10.6 is the item on the decorum policy?
Yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember August. Councilmember Furman.
Hi.
Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton. Mayor Mann.
Hi. Councilmember Furman, you have the floor on ten point six.
Thank you, thank you very much. Ms. Bennet, if you would please turn to page eleven on the decorum policy, please, for me. My voice is a little raspy tonight. I think it's just a clearance of wording, okay? Would, would you read the third paragraph, item four, there aloud for me, please?
I want to be sure we're in, you said page eleven of the policy?
Yeah, eleven of thirteen.
Eleven of thirteen. Item four?
So paragraph four at the top would be the third paragraph.
At the top, third paragraph, now it says IV. Is that four?
With regard, is that the one?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, gotcha. With regard to items requested by members of the City Council during the regular City Council meetings, such items will be scheduled for the next council meeting whenever possible. If an item requires additional staff work that cannot be completed in that timeframe, such items shall appear on the agenda as scheduled future agenda items with a notation as to when they are scheduled to be brought to, oops, there's a clear typo there, to council is.
Okay. I wanted to correct that also.
Thank you. I will make that correction.
And also, I believe that we used to do this, and I'd like to start doing it again.
Okay.
Okay, since it's on the, it's on the decorum policy.
Got it.
If, I would appreciate if you went through back through 2013 and noted all the items that were recommended for future agenda items, to see how we scored. You would do that for me, please.
I'm a little confused. If it was ever asked for, whether it was acted on or not, you'd like to see a list of it?
Right.
I got it.
I think to back up what Councilmember Furman's saying, there's, there's several ordinances out there that we delay. We've made a conscious decision to delay. We made agenda items to delay, to satisfy the requirements of the general plan. Deputy Mayor asked for two items tonight. So, you know, as an example of what happened tonight, the two things that Mr. Edgerton asked for theoretically, in accordance with our decorum policy, even though staff's got a plan to bring it back on February 5th, under our decorum policy, those would appear on that section of the agenda as a future agenda item. Right?
Yeah. Plus, there was a couple I noted, reading the old minutes, that Mr. Denver had asked for something, it never, nothing, nothing ever happened of it. So, just the synopsis, I'd appreciate it for everybody to see.
Mr. Edgerton?
Yeah, just point of order, in reference to the two items that I put forward, the second item in reference to finance reform would go on to the next meeting. The first item in reference to Parks Recreation would be held over until the 5th, when we had an opportunity for a strategic session.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think we did this about a year ago, and then all of a sudden it just stopped, remember? You usually give us a future agenda list, and we'd be checking stuff off. I'd like to make sure that's in our packet from now on. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I make a motion to approve ten point six.
May I have a second?
Second.
Does this require a roll call vote?
Because it was on consent, it would be yes, wise.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Now that we've approved, no, we haven't. Okay, good. Councilmember August.
Hi.
Councilmember Furman.
Hi.
Councilmember Denver.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Hi.
Mayor Mann.
Hi. So just as a point of clarification, then, going forward, does that resolution, the decorum policy changes become effective immediately?
Yes, sir. I actually considered, starting with item twelve point one, should you ask for a roll call, then I would begin this, the sheet I have of how to call your votes.
Yeah, so, so District One, District Two, District Three, District Four is how it's reflected in the policy.
And then District Two, Three, Four, One, and the mayor, and so forth.
Correct. Okay, got it. And we're going to, we're going to start that tonight?
I'm, I'm so ready.
You're going to start that tonight.
I'm going to start that, yes.
All right. Marvelous. We have no public hearing items tonight, so on to Agenda Item Twelve Point One for discussion. Approve agreement with Adami Landscape for design and construction of the Cherry Hills Boulevard Street median. Do we have a staff report?
We do, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's coming up now. The item before you is for the Cherry Hills Boulevard Street median enhancement project. This was a project that's been carried over from last year. As you remember, we did a number of improvement projects in the public right-of-way, one being Newport and Hawn, the median there, the landscaping around the Sun City Shopping Center, and the landscaping along Bradley. This is continuing that, that, there we go. This is continuing that project along to improve the medians and to bring community monumentation to Sun City. The enhancement project was identified, and Cherry Hills Boulevard is a much-needed and accomplishable improvement project. It was added into the, it is a part of our current fiscal year budget that was approved by council, by the way. The project will improve and enhance the city's street medians in a highly-traveled area. Staff developed a scope of work to complement the library landscape, the Sun City Shopping Center landscape, the Bradley right-of-way landscape improvements. The street improvements would improve the street medians by adding water-efficient plant material with point-to-point drip irrigation, similar to what we're doing all around our right-of-way areas, so that water is not leaking onto our roadways, and we're not causing a hazard in that area. It also allows us to plant more plants and give them direct water in a, in a much more efficient manner. We're going to be installing, should you agree with this, four new thirty-six-inch box trees, fifteen, twenty-four-inch box trees, five-and-one-gallon shrubs, and about five-thousand square feet of mulch. We're also going to be adding the monumentation that we introduced last year when we did the Coyle Valley Fire Station Landscape Project. It will be the same type of marquee, and it will say Sun City Community of Menifee. This is what the project conceptual rendering looks like. This is the corner of Bradley and Cherry Hills, looking to the east, and down below in the smaller picture, unfortunately, you can't really see it very well, is what it currently looks like. So you'll see a plethora of low-lying plants, shrubs, some, some nice decomposed granite, and some curving on the initial median width. Right behind the palm trees there, there's a group of palm trees, there's a crepe myrtle and a fruitless olive tree, which is what we're doing most of our landscaping with. This is the second section of the landscaping, or median area. As you know, there's three medians in this area. This is the lengthy median in the middle, and this will be where most of the crepe myrtles and the fruitless olive trees will be. This mirrors what we're doing on Newport, or what we've done on Newport, and what our anticipated Newport eastbound median will look like when our Newport widening project is completed. The funding's available in the capital projects budget for citywide medians. It was bid according to the City of Menifee procurement guidelines. The contract that was selected and that basically won the bid was Adami Landscape. Total project cost is sixty-four thousand five hundred and eighty, and the project's start date, should it be approved tonight, is late January of 2014. That's the end of my presentation. I'll be happy to take questions, and staff's recommending approval.
Mr. Furman?
I have one question. If someone wanted to buy one of them palm trees, what would they, what would they have to do?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Aren't we removing some palm trees?
They've already been removed.
Oh.
Those were removed about a year and a half ago. There was twenty-one.
I didn't know if they weren't there.
Unfortunately, they were decayed and dying. They had to be removed.
All right.
The palm trees that are on the corner of Bradley and Cherry Hills will still remain. They'll stay there.
All right.
Is there a motion to approve staff's proposal?
Motion to approve.
And there's a second by Mr. Furman? Roll call, vote, please, under the new decorum.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, we do have a speaker on this side.
Oh.
So sorry. Went into it so quickly, I almost bypassed.
We'll take the speaker, then, before we, we do have a motion and a second on the floor.
I noted that.
And reserve the right to continue to discuss.
Thank you. And Pika?
I'm asking the City Council to not approve this agreement for Cherry Hills Boulevard Street median design at this time for the following reasons. No beautification project should be at the top of the priority list in the Sun City area when the City Council and City Manager are aware there's an outstanding critical danger to the public health and safety just a few blocks away at the corner of McCallan and Encanto that can be fixed for under five thousand dollars. This beautification project set for the Cherry Hill Boulevard Street median includes installing thirty-six-inch box trees, twenty-four-inch box trees, and an assortment of five-and-one-gallon drought-tolerant shrubs for the price of sixty-four thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. If I recall correctly, the city just removed all the dead trees from that area not long ago, and why are we investing in trees that require watering when Southern California is fighting for every drop of water we now have imported, and it's costing the taxpayers in the long run for those so-called beautification projects? And if you're going to be putting up a monument sign stating Sun City, a community of Menifee, then it should be put at the entrance of the Sun City area that is on the west side of two fifteen side of Encanto Road and McCall, not in the center of the core. This project was identified through the development of the Sun City Enhancement Plan, and the so-called beautification project should include all of the Sun City area and not just District One that Mr. August represents. Let's make sure we are representing all the people of Sun City, not just one-third of the population. Let's get our priorities in order. Public health and safety outweigh any and all beautification projects.
Thank you, staff. We, this is one of, this is the first phase of four Sun City Core median rehabilitation projects, is it not?
This was actually part of the Sun City Enhancement Project that I actually developed as a senior management analyst about two and a half years ago. So Mr. August was not on the council then when this happened. And yes, it is a phased-in project. What we do is we have developer impact fees that go toward median projects that are citywide, and yes, we have identified other, other areas. But this one was actually earmarked, and it's something that, quite frankly, I didn't have time to get done, and now it's coming to fruition. So it's, it's been a long time coming for us. But it's also a separate budgeting function than what Mrs. Peak is referring to in regards to a traffic issue situation. So we can't use the money for this beautification on the traffic portion.
Designated funds.
Correct.
Thank you for that clarification. So is there any other questions of staff or discussion amongst the council? We have a motion by Mr. August and a second by Councilmember Furman. Call or roll?
Councilmember August.
Hi.
Councilmember Denver.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Hi.
Councilmember Furman.
Hi.
Mayor Mann.
Hi. On to Agenda Item Twelve Point Two. Consider request of United Church of Christ for a waiver of fees for a planning application. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council in general, I'm going to speak a little bit about how we got to where we are, and then I'm going to pass it over to Charles Leclerc if there's any technical questions that you, that you might have. I ended up meeting with the United Church of Christ due to their building a new monument outside of their property without a permit. They were witness doing that. They were stopped. They were asked where the permit was. They didn't have one. They didn't understand the sign code and the ordinance is that, basically, they already have one. They want a secondary one. They started to go through the process, application process, and were very unsure of how to, how to do that and how to go about it. So I called them in. We had a meeting. We spent about an hour going through the process, to which they were very concerned that they didn't have, A, the funds to finish the application for the, for the sign or the marquee, and two, it would require a variance in our sign ordinance. There, it precludes a business of any kind for having more than one marquee. So I explained to them that, you know, they could go through the process, but technically, staff was going to deny them, so if they were spending their money to apply, they also needed to spend their money for a variance. Unfortunately, I also needed to let them know that the variance that was going to the Planning Commission, that they were going to pay for, would not have staff's approval. Staff cannot approve a variance for a project that does not conform to the ordinance. So of course, they were frustrated with that, but still wanted to move forward with the process, and I let them know that if they wanted to move forward and they didn't have the funds, they could come make a request at City Council for their fees to be waived. But I did tell them that even if their fees were waived, on the initial application fee and the variance, that it would still receive, it would not be recommended by staff to the Planning Commission for fund, for approval, because it was against the actual ordinance. So it would be completely and solely up to the Planning Commission to, to approve that. They did come to council. They did make that request. Mr. August asked that it be put on the agenda, and that's really where we're here tonight. Charles did a wonderful job on the staff report and added a myriad of things that, that I have kind of covered in the last couple of minutes, but he's got a couple of others. I think he's five significant questions that he had in the staff report that I think are really important for you to think about as you move forward, because some unintended consequences of, of agreeing to waive fees and variance fees for someone or some group could cause, obviously, some other issues in other areas. So I'm going to hand it off to Charles Leclerc, Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Mayor and Council. As the City Managers just noted in the staff report, I do suggest you consider five different items in making your consideration on this. And the issue isn't necessarily the sign, per se, it's whether or not the city would elect to assist in a private entity, in this case, a church, but it could have been a church, any other nonprofit organization, or even a business in the community, asking for assistance through the council to pay for or remove the cost of processing a request before the Planning Commission and/or City Council. So in the staff report, I note the five different items as whether or not there are alternatives to the requests that would allow them to have what they're asking for but not need to go through the planning process, thus incurring the cost of that planning process. Two, whether or not what they're asking for is a necessity versus a choice on their part. Is it an absolute necessity that what they're requesting for be approved? The third, the third issue to be discussed, whether or not allowing this or waiving this fee would set a precedent that others would cite for justification for their request for a waiver. Fourth, whether the public would see this as a gift of public funds, excuse me, public funds. And fifth, whether or not the council, if someone were to review this material, whether or not it would give the impression that by granting a waiver of the fees, that the council was in favor of whatever the act was that was going to be reviewed that necessitated the fees, and therefore not in favor of the codes that they themselves have adopted for the community. Obviously, the opposite to most of those arguments are whether or not what the, in this case, would be, an applicant would be doing would be something that would be beneficial to the community. In this case, the church upholding family values, family values that the community has one of the reasons why you incorporate it as a city in order to promote family values as this council saw fit. With this, the, as the City Manager noted, there are certain costs involved. The three thousand dollars for the variance, the five hundred dollars for the initial plot plan review for the sign that would be considered. If the Planning Commission elected not to grant the variance, then there would be fees associated with appealing that decision to the City Council, and those fees would be an additional five thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars, bringing the possible total to nine thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars. Again, staff suggests that you consider whether or not this would set a precedent, and whether or not this would be beneficial to not only this property and this applicant, but to the community as a whole. I'll attempt to answer questions that you may have.
I just want to be, I have a question. Is staffs recommend, or what's before us tonight? An application fee waiver or an application fee waiver and a potential variance waiver in terms of the fee?
Application fee waiver and, and a variance waiver.
So what was the?
They have to have a variance to go to, to Planning Commission.
So the applicant is asked, the individual representing the church is asking that the City Council waive the fees that are associated with the application and processing of a plot plan, a variance, and if necessary, an appeal to the City Council.
If they, and I'll give you the floor in just a minute, Mr. Furman, but if, if the, if the church came back and said, well, gee, we understand what the city's saying, what staff's telling us, instead of having two signs, if they were to demolish their old sign and erect the new sign, does that change the game here?
Yes, it would significantly change the, the, what we have is a situation where they've had a large permanent sign that has been in place for a number of years. They had a...
As long as the church has been built, is my understanding.
Correct. They also have or had a small wooden... They also have, or had, a small wooden, in substantial sign that was put up without a permit, and they have removed that and in an attempt to put in the new monument sign. So if they, um, continue to keep the non-permitted sign out of the picture, and address the existing permanent sign, removing that and putting a new sign up in its place, they would simply go through the plot plan process, which is the high $100.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Furman?
Hi Chuck, I, I had, uh, I had this discussion earlier with, uh, someone else, and I'm not quite clear of the function of a variance. Now, I'm gonna say how I understand it, uh, uh, staff can't recommend, uh, anything because it doesn't fit anywhere in a code or an ordinance, but if the council felt it was a necessity and found a need, then they could allow it? Is that what a variance is?
What, what the city manager was referring to is whenever you grant a variance, a variance is a deviation from the standards of the code. In this case, the request would be for a second sign where the code only allows one. Staff is required to, um, make specific findings of fact that support the, uh, whether or not that waiver would be appropriate for that particular location under those particular circumstances. We would make a recommendation to the Planning Commission, they would make their own independent interpretation of those required findings to make a decision. Under the situation that we have here, it's extremely likely that staff's position would be that we could not make those findings because there isn't anything unique about the property that would support the additional requirements for the signage. It would grant a privilege that others in the area do not currently enjoy, and so forth, the other findings that are involved. But the Planning Commission could make its own findings in support of that, and/or if it was not found, if they could not make those findings and it was appealed to the City Council, the City Council could make those findings. However, they become part of the record, and it, it could be considered as a precedent for others to cite the exact same issues.
Okay, understood. Thank you very much.
Mr. Denver?
Do we have a, a speaker or a report from the church?
Is there anybody?
No one has turned in a speaker slip.
Is anybody from the church here that's prepared to make us understand this, from your perspective? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. August, I'm gonna turn this over to you. This, um, do you have a, uh, this is your district, you asked for this agenda item, the, would you like to lead the discussion amongst the council?
That would, uh, that would be fine with me. I, uh, looked at this issue for, for the last week or so, and I understand the issue, and thank you, Charles, for explaining it. That's how I understand it, and I wish somebody from the church had been here to, tonight to, to kind of explain it, because, um, as Mr. Leclerc suggested, if they were willing to put their efforts into the, uh, to the existing sign, that's a whole different story. I'm gonna be inclined to oppose the request for the waiver, but I wanna, I just wanna read a little prepared statement here. This is a real, kind of a difficult situation for me, it's gonna be for everybody on the council, because we're all big supporters of, uh, in general of the churches and the nonprofits in the city, and whenever we can, can go out of our way to support them and or other activities, we're, we're, we're gonna take the opportunity to do that. I'm, I'm well aware and in great appreciation of the physical, mental, and spiritual role they play, all the nonprofits and the churches in our city, in special deference in the adherence and their charitable causes they're doing all the time, and the imprint they work so hard to instill in all of us, um, to be, that to be the whole and healthy community, there's a need for and worth for good and strong fellowship. That's what nonprofits and churches do for all of us. I think everyone on this council feels the same way, their work is indispensable to the city. If anyone deserves an exception, it would be them, but to approve a waiver of fees for a sign will lead to a rush of more exceptions by other churches, nonprofits, uh, other businesses, and so on and so forth down the road. Mr. Leclerc called it as a, as a gift, and it's kinda how I would try to look at it. It could lead to a precedent that the city cannot afford, in my opinion, and the city and the staff and other people like ourselves on the council could be helpless in a never-ending dialogue attempting to justify one exception opposed to another. In my opinion, that would not be in the best interest of the greater city, the city staff, the city council, and paradoxically, the churches and the nonprofits themselves, they would start to argue with each other over if, if we were to allow this. I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to an additional sign or their right to request or qualify for a variance from the ordinance, regretfully for reasons, I really have to disapprove their request. And I'd just like to add one thing, Mr., I think Mr. Leclerc proved this. We recently approved a fee schedule for services in the city of Menifee by granting this waiver of fees. That would mean we, other businesses or people putting in permits or, or fees would, would, uh, would might have to go without. In other words, we, if we're gonna hire new people in the city, if we start giving away money and, uh, fees and, and gifts to nonprofits and churches, uh, there's gonna be a lack of money to perhaps build the staff so that we can take care of all the requested services at the city, at the city, like we just hired two new people. We wouldn't be able to do that if we continued to give in to, to, to these, uh, requests for fee reductions and free services. So in that regard, I'm gonna have to vote against it, uh, their, their request.
Mr. Furman?
Uh, after, after listening to this discussion, I, I see we have, uh, we got two different, uh, roads that we're trying to decide on. This, this variance seems to be that they want a waiver of fees for something that is not permitted. Uh, now there is, uh, a little bit of discussion that, that we may help people that are doing a permit application to have something that is permitted. Uh, those people that are doing something in, that is permitted, uh, you know, I would approve, uh, fast-tracking and helping those people out as much as possible, but I have to agree with Greg, since this, actually, they're applying for something that is against the code, then I have to, I have to side with Mr. August's decision.
Is there any other discussion? Now, just a point of clarification for the attorney, um, I'm gonna ask for a motion, but if the motion fail, if there's no motion and there's no second, the, the matter dies, right? Or do we need to have a motion in a second, since we agendized it and the applicant has requested a fee waiver? Do we have to legally officially act with a roll call vote? That's my question.
You're not, you're not required to act. This is a discussion item, you can discuss it, and if there is no consensus, you can let it be.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Edgerton?
Yes, I would think ordinarily on something like this for clarification, wouldn't there be a motion to deny?
Yeah, I think I would, that would be my preference, would be to, uh, since, since the, since the applicant asked for it, since a council member agendized it, since we spent significant amount of staff time on it, it'd be my inclination to take a motion in a second and actually, uh, take a vote on it. So I'll entertain a motion on this.
Could, could we make our recommendation on what to do, or just let it?
I, I think-
Let Planning work it out with the church?
I think we could make, if you wanted to make a motion with additional direction to staff to try to make, reach a compromise, we, you could, that's appropriate.
Yeah, I think that would add on it, that we should work with them to see what they can do. You got options, you, you gave them the various options to demolish the sign or do this and do that, I think, let's work with them somehow.
Okay. Is that your motion? To deny the application for the fee waiver and to have staff work with the applicant on a compromise?
Yes, yes, I'll make that-
Is there a second?
I, I, I kind of point, a pointed order. I, I don't know how you vote on this. How do you, how do you give instruction to somebody to work with them? I could argue that we gave you instruction to lower their fees somehow, I could also-
It's the same thing we did to Summit Rental.
I, and I didn't, I don't, I think this is bad precedent. Second thing we could be, I could make a point to say, uh, work with them to take down their sign, you could, and all you have to do is do nothing and you've probably done what we've instructed you. I think it's a weak, a weak motion, and I think you should deny, or just forget the whole thing, or approve it. I don't think you should make these-
All right, I'm gonna defer to, let Mr. August make a motion if he so feels. I'll retract.
Uh, uh, the mayor is gonna, I'll, I'll make the motion to deny the application fee waiver. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Thank you.
Onto agenda item 12.3, approved letter of support to the Riverside Transit Agency for a grant for the First Last Mile program. Is there a brief staff report on this? Mr. Johnson?
Uh, there is a brief staff report. We received, uh, information and a request. We, um, had concurrence of the deputy mayor to, to add this, as he is a sitting member of the RTA, uh, board. And really what it is, is, is to get the city's support for an application for a grant program that would allow, uh, it's got an interesting name, First and Last Mile, but really what it is, is a study, uh, to incorporate, uh, more bus shelters within the city, and, um, they're seeking our, our support, and the letter's attached. That's the report that we have.
And it's my, it's my understanding that it's a, it's a grant, it's a, it's a letter of support from us, seeking a grant by the RTA, which Mr. Edgerton sits on, to go after, uh, tax dollars that have already been appropriated under existing legislation and Prop 84, is my understanding.
I believe you are 100% correct.
Mr. Edgerton, do you have anything to add for, uh, this motion or this item?
Uh, yes, I would so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, vote, please.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
And Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Thank you.
You know, I, just, you know, we, the city has applied for other grants under Prop 84, uh, throughout our five-year history, and those were, uh, for Line A and other significant, significant projects. So this is just an example of going after dollars that have already been appropriated. So, on to city attorney reports.
Well, the only thing I can report is that it's great to be back in Southern California, where the temperature is above 46 degrees below zero. Uh, my, as you know, I spent the last couple of weeks in Indiana, and, uh, my appreciation for living in California has grown leaps and bounds since that experience. I'm glad to be back.
Thank you, welcome back.
You guys said it right.
That's what happens whenever you get in the car.
By, by the way, excuse me, just in reference to what the city attorney said, I understand that the Chicago Zoo had to get the penguins and the polar bear out of the cold and bring them inside. That's pretty cold.
Global warming at its finest. Um, with that, on to, uh, city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I have a, a little bit of a lengthier report than usual, it's in your red folder. I have, uh, some exciting detailed information about what's been happening over the last couple of weeks here around City Hall, and wanted to make sure that that was reported out properly. Uh, I reported to you at the end of December, in our mid-December meeting, that there were some 386, uh, permits that were to be issued by the Building Department in December. I can tell you and commend our Building Department, under Colin McNeese, those were all permitted, 386 of them. That keeps our economy growing, keeps our construction projects moving, and it keeps everybody working, and we, we appreciate the work that they've done. The two council-appointed building inspectors have started, they started last week, Todd Beelow and Richard, I wanna say Marks, but that's an old eighties singer, uh, maybe it is Richard Marks. Um, we have a significant amount of new development under construction. Fitness 19 opened on Christmas Eve, just so everyone knows, our staff was at, uh, Fitness 19 at, uh, six o'clock in the morning, 5:30 in the morning, under a fire, uh, uh, department watch, making sure that, uh, that business could open, and by nine o'clock, uh, we were out of there, and, uh, people continued to work out at Fitness 19 while alarms were going on and sirens were going off and, and things were getting finalized. Uh, McDonald's on Newport and Winterhawk, the grading's complete, the forms and framing are going on. Uh, Jack in the Box, uh, was cleared to grade, uh, that's on Highway 74. O'Reilly Auto Parts is, uh, a pad at the Stater Brothers at Marietta and Newport, and they have been cleared, uh, to grade. Uh, Auto Zone is at Marietta and Newport in the old Albertson Center, uh, they're doing interior tenant improvements, and they should be open by summer. Uh, finalizing Dollar Tree, I believe that happened this morning, and they're either open today, I don't know if Colin's around, or tomorrow. I see shaking of heads, so I'm assuming they're gonna be open tomorrow. Um, there is, uh, what our, uh, Public Works Director lovingly refers to as iron, uh, on the site at Applebee's, Five Guys, Burgers, and Jersey Mike Subs, and the retail shops at Newport-Hon, uh, next to Circle K, where we've been telling you about this for about six months, and, uh, they, they finally got their plans together, and they got their permit, and they're out there, uh, doing some pre-construction work, and they're gonna be grading on that site, uh, and that should be up and running very shortly.
Can I just interject a-
Anytime.
You know, um, seeing as how engineers have a tendency to talk engineer speak, what does iron on site mean? Are we talking rolling stock?
Bulldozers and-
Okay, so we're talking rolling stock for construction, not, not actual-
Rebar.
-vertical construction action.
Rebar.
Big equip, all right, thank you.
What time? I just got a heads up that Dollar Tree opened from our building official today.
They were approved today?
No, they have their sign on the window.
Well, there, there's a difference of opinion. They were approved, so they can open whenever they want, but we, we approved them to open.
Got the approval, though.
So, uh, so now, so now instead of it always being on us, it's on them now, they're, they're being cleared to open. Uh, at the Regent Town Center, there's multiple projects moving forward, obviously they're cutting the Town Center Drive into Newport. You see now, uh, the vision of what that's gonna look like as an entryway, there's some asphalt there in front, there's a little curb and, uh, curb and gutter, no, uh, no sidewalk yet. Um, multiple property deals are coming, including, and I'm gonna say it out loud, a movie theater and, uh, a large residential, uh, piece in that area, it's, and all within the specific plan. Uh, we can't announce who that movie theater company is, but we're, um, like, I don't know, inches, half inch, quarter of an inch of that being done. We're awaiting an application from Rich Development on the property east of the Palma Wash between, uh, it says Newport, but it's Newport and Han, just west of Countryside Marketplace. Uh, our economic development and, and community development and engineering staff have been working with Rich Development for several months to, to really create an environment that looks similar to the Countryside Marketplace, so that we can have a really nice, uh, area right across the street from that, just e- uh, east of the Palma Wash and, and west of Han Road. We're talking about two, two more sit-down restaurants, two kind of faster rants, coffee shops, some retail areas, and some places to sit and, uh, and, and enjoy the, uh, Menifee outdoors. Um, we're waiting for the application for that, we're hearing it's, it's, uh, any day. Road projects, obviously the Menifee Missing Road Link, if you haven't been up there, by Simpson and, and where Menifee Road's coming in, it's almost that grade, it's right there. Uh, there's curb going in, there's gutter going in, there's storm drain going in, there's utilities going in, it, it actually looks really, really nice.
That's on schedule to, uh, for the project completion in March.
We have the Newport, uh, Road Widening Project, the project's on track to pave the final cap next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, January 14th, 15th, and 16th. Electronic signs will be posted, uh, Twitter and Facebook updates will continue. Uh, Newport will be closed down to one lane starting this Friday through the weekend, on the south side, traveling eastbound. The gutter has to be poured and cured before the final, final cap can go in.
Can we take extra measures with our media outlets to make sure that that gets out?
We, we do have that, and we will do that, but, but we've, we're doing something, we're going one step beyond.
Okay.
Our new hire, our Assistant Director of Public Works, Rafael Martinez, is a traffic signal working expert, and he's gonna be on-site for three days personally, adjusting the, the signals so that traffic can flow. So we're gonna have our own personal traffic signal guy, uh, changing things. We'll also have some detour signs up, so that people can go down Antelope, go down La Piazza, or come back up Menifee. Newport I-215 interchange, as the mayor said earlier, uh, we are approved for the 14.625 million dollars that we requested, that, uh, that was the final piece of the puzzle, and, uh, even though the project will be federalized, uh, construction and utility coordination relocation will begin in March. Uh, at the end of March, or the first couple of weeks of April, you're going to see, uh, equipment and trenching and moving around and signage and construction work, uh, out on that interchange. The McCall I-215, uh, request for proposal for preliminary design of interchange was released last week on January 6th, actually two days ago. Um, what that's gonna do is give us a, a real clear picture as to what we're gonna need with right-of-way, and, and how the bridge is gonna look, and the expansion, and the, kind of the estimated, uh, cost of what that's gonna take to, to do the improvements at that interchange. The Holland Road Overpass Final Design, Final Design, RFP, went out two days ago. We're in final design phase now, we're waiting for, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun, waiting for responses to the final design piece, so we can move Holland Road, uh, forward. We actually released, uh, the request for proposal for development impact fee study, released that last week. When that comes back, uh, we'll bring that back to council for discussion. Uh, tomorrow, uh, some restriping on McCall in response to our meeting- our meetings with the Roma Land and Menifee Unified, or Union, and Paris Unified, Union School District. And we meet like on a quarterly basis with them when we can, and this was a huge issue on the Boulder Ridge site between Antelope, Menifee. We're going to be doing that restriping that we talked about. It's happening tomorrow. So, we're ahead of the game on that one. I wanted to talk a little bit about with you and get concurrence from you on the council workshop on the strategic planning and the priorities. We spoke about this before. I'd like approval to schedule this for Thursday, January 30th, hopefully at a 4:00 PM timeframe, so we can kind of get in here a little bit earlier and have an opportunity for staff to bring some information, for us to gather information back from you, and then to kind of collate where we're going to go and what our next steps are. From a staff perspective, the idea would be to prioritize council's priorities for the calendar year of 2014. To update and review the CIP program, we need to, we need to report back to you on that. This is the first year in the CIP. We're doing some great things, but there's some other things that could be added as we go along. We want to talk about those. Discussion of the city manager's staffing plan that you asked me for in October, and a discussion of three, five, seven-year strategic goals from council members directing to staff, so that we can create these long-term projects that we've been talking about that are outside the CIP, whatever those may be. With your concurrence and approval, I'm respectfully asking for Thursday, January 30th, at 4:00, for that strategic planning workshop.
Is anybody ready to commit to that date now, or would you like to provide separate feedback to Mr. Johnson after checking your calendars?
How long would the meeting be?
I'm thinking two hours, two and a half.
Thursday, January 30th at 4:00 PM.
Four to six-ish.
I'm good.
I think I'm okay, I just want to-
Okay.
I don't think there's a conflict with the RTA.
Which Thursday is that?
Is that the 3rd, the 4th?
It's the 5th, it's the last one.
It's the 5th.
What was the date?
January 30th.
Is the 5th Thursday?
Yeah.
I think I'm going to be good.
And if you said 4:30?
Four o'clock. We'll also send out a notification to you, and I'll make sure that-
Two hours.
Probably, I would, I would think about two.
It's good for me, Mr. August. Is it okay for you?
That's fine.
That's five yeses.
Great, wonderful.
Mine by email, it's all people.
And we'll have the city clerk contact you and make sure that we get the agenda out and it's posted. The final thing is the staffing and budgeting. Community Services Director interviews will be again next week. We had about a four-week recruitment for that position, and we're looking forward to having a new director, the city's first Director of Parks and Recreation, that we're calling Community Services. Hopefully, we'll have that position onboard by late January or mid-February. The mid-year budget and staffing plan to council, we're hoping to bring that to you on February 5th. We want to give you time at the January 30th workshop to give us some feedback before we finalize those issues. And we're also working with the executive consultant, John Nelson, to finalize the report on Community Services or Parks and Recreation, with recommendations to move forward, and we're going to bring that to you on February 5th.
And of course, that, that particular event on February 5th, and that report's going to have to have some dialogue from staff to us on Mr. Edgerton's request to have a discussion on the Trails Committee, and how we go forward with that.
So noted, and we'll make that update.
Any question? Is that, does that complete this portion of your report, or do you have others?
That completes my report for tonight.
I just wanted to ask a question about, and Mr. Edgerton's brought this up before, in reply to input from District 3 folks. I noticed that, and you may not legally be able to talk about it, but, because there hasn't been an application, but we do have some interest on a couple of developments over in District 3 at the intersection of Menifee and Newport Road, do we not?
Yes, we do, and I believe I can talk about those, and I apologize for being remiss of those. On the north, sorry, southeast corner of Menifee and Newport is a Stater Brothers that has come in for application, with six to seven other buildings laid out there right in front of the former Centex Home Development. Stater Brothers will be coming in first, and then building the buildings around it. They own the entire piece. My understanding is that they are coming in with a map that has some areas that they can sell off, and they're looking at, I believe it was four restaurant pads, whether it's a sit-down fast rant, you know the fast rant I'm talking about, right? Where you order at the counter, and then you go sit down, and they bring you your food. And I believe a pharmacy, separate from Stater Brothers, a coffee-
I believe that was-
CVS, that's what was on the plot plan application that I saw. And some sort of coffee establishment, I don't think it was actually played out yet.
And a child development-
And a child development center. Directly north of that, across the street, we do have application and working through the AMPM, which will be right next to the fire station. So, it looks like we're moving forward in a lot of different directions around the city.
Nice.
If we have any input, and they can put it in a Starbucks, and especially a New York Cheesecake Factory.
I did, I did see a pad for some kind of coffee establishment, but without a name.
That would be great, that would be great.
I think we're all kind of getting tired of the line at the Starbucks, which is out the door. Seems like every student at Paloma Valley High School goes and gets their coffee before they go to school there, and it's getting rough, you know? It's getting rough.
You have to pass an ordinance, you have to be 55 or older.
And just to make a plug for staff, obviously with all these things that are coming through, you've got hard-working public works and engineering department staff, planning staff has to see it first, and then you got your building staff that comes in after, and then hopefully we don't have to have code enforcement come in when it's all said and done. But there's, there's a great group of staff that we have here, working very long hours to make sure that all these things come through.
Well, I would-
Do you think them stumps will be for sale now?
Them stumps.
They're sitting on that property there, all them stumps?
On the property where the Station 76 sits?
Yeah.
They might be. You could put a note on one of them and see if somebody-
Since Mr. Furman didn't get his palm tree he wanted, maybe he wants a stump. I want to echo, I mean, you're absolutely right, Mr. Johnson. I mean, this, a lot of these things are the culmination of several months and years worth of effort, and a lot of staff work and marketing effort, and the economic development plan, and the things that the staff and the council have done, past and present. It's clear that Menifee's open for business when it comes to the commercial green shoots of progress, if you will, and the fact that some things are coming over in the east part of town is really good, so that we can stop some of that sales tax bleed-off to Marietta, for the pharmacy down off of Scott and those other establishments there. As good as they are, you know, we'd rather have that money stay in here. Did that complete your report, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you kindly. Onto, are there any council member updates, excuse me, I'm sorry, requests for, from council members for future agenda items, Mr. Edgerton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item here that is in reference to staff wishing to put another quiver, or another arrow, and I'll just read it. I do want to make one modification. This was printed out by staff, by our city manager, which I strongly support, but I would want to make one modification with the support of the council. Request that staff update current city codes regarding public nuisances to include a definition of neighborhood standards in language which would allow staff to enforce unmaintained landscapes throughout the city. Some are concerned about residents not keeping up front yards of occupied homes, which may have a negative effect on property values in developed neighborhoods with curbs and gutters in place. The only caveat I have there, Mr. Johnson, is that I would like to put an exception there to the rural areas. It's usually, most cities, and I believe our city's position, that when you're looking at tract homes, that we go in with code enforcement, and we're proactive. But in the rural areas, it is complaint-driven. So, in other words, I wouldn't want this to be interpreted as a license to go out there, because in the rural area, I lived there for 15 years. You can cite every one of them if you want, every single day, but-
The attempt was with the curb and gutter, that that would be the differentiation. Most of the rural roads are either-
Good.
Are rolled curbing, or asphalt curbing, or dirt.
Good, thank you.
So, it wouldn't be effective in that area.
Thank you.
Mr. Edgerton, get a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. So ordered. Mr. August?
I would only hope, and I'm going to support Mr. Edgerton's position, but one of my, one of my concerns is when you start talking about people's landscapes in front of their properties, is there's always homeowners' associations involved. And I would hate to think if we do pass an ordinance like that, that we're allowing the homeowners' associations to abrogate their responsibilities to their homeowners, if people are paying fees and dues and association fees and things like that. So, when the time comes to pass it, I hope we can address that.
That'd be appropriate, for sure.
Point of order, that's a good comment, Councilman August. I don't think we're entitled to go in and use this in a homeowners' association unless they give us the okay.
That's correct. I don't believe even if they give us the okay, typically a CCNR and an HOA would be higher standard than what the neighborhood standard would be.
They're of a higher standard than the rest of us.
Correct. Their CCNRs are of a higher standard than the neighborhood standard that we would have in our nuisance payment. So, they would be liable for the HOA areas.
Okay, thank you. So, anyway, so move.
Thank you. That is modified. Any other council member requests? Mr. Denver?
Could we have a report on the business licenses, and the numbers, the kinds, maybe lists, and also could we have an analysis of whether this is proactive, reactive, and what our intentions are having to do with business licenses? Also, could you touch the issue of people who come into our town and put up signs, but their businesses are out of town, and whether they need a business license or not, and whether or not we, whether or not we actually make that rule? Let's get that over with. Let's get that issue settled.
Mr. Johnson?
Can I ask a clarifying question? Is that in regard to realtors?
Well, it is. But, but it also-
Just wanted to make sure, I don't want to go in an area that-
But, there are a lot of signs up with such-and-such electric, and the numbers are in West Covina.
Right.
And do those people have to have-
Technically, if they do business in Menifee, they need a business license.
Then, and then the next question is going to be-
We'll bring a report and clear that up.
What is your plans having to do with proactive activity on that, as others?
Well, I could give you an answer now, but I can give you a full report later.
That's what I would like.
It's not, it's not on the agenda, but I'm looking for a second for Councilmember Denver's request for a future staff report on that item.
Second.
Thank you.
Now, was, was there a second on?
Yours, yes, Mr. Furman seconded that.
Okay.
Yeah, as modified.
We didn't, we didn't need a vote on it.
No, it's, under the decorum policy, just takes two to agendize. City Attorney, before Mr. August?
Well, one, one question here, is there's quite a list of these. Are these all supposed to be on the next agenda?
Absolutely.
No.
Or, or according to the decorum, a date has to be given when it is going to be on the agenda.
Okay. Just to call that, because that was raised earlier, and I thought it was important to clarify.
Well-
Put a date when it's going to-
Yeah, and that's, if I may just interject, I think this council has, over all throughout 2013, when we gave direction to staff, we also, we also added to the caveat that, you know, consistent with the current workload, and you bring it, and you just keep us informed, as Mr. Furman mentioned tonight, about the decorum policy, keep it in the forefront of our minds by keeping it under the future agenda section, even if it doesn't have a date. Okay? Mr. August?
I just wanted to, my Santa's workshop message at the beginning of the council meeting, I wanted to pass on to you that Giovanni's Pizza provided 10 giant pizzas for all of the volunteers and participants of the workshop, and Straw Hat provided three. So, if you get a chance to drop by and say thanks to Tom and Pat at Giovanni's Pizza, and maybe Straw Hat Pizza, so.
Thanks. I have three things. One's related to a travel request of mine that I was remiss and asked, Mr. Edgerton advised me to ask for this back in November, at the November 6th meeting, and I failed to do that. So, I'm asking for the council's concurrence now. Back in the budgetary process, we built in some, we built in the council's travel schedule, training and lobbying efforts, and I, my understanding is that there is money in the budget that we haven't used for council travel and lobbying trips, and I have an opportunity to attend the US Conference of Mayors back in Washington DC, and also engage in some lobbying effort with Senator Boxer and Feinstein, and to, one, House Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, and also on the Senate Committee on Economic, excuse me, Environment and Public Works. And those discussions, those appointments are all related to Line A and the Quail Valley Sewer. So, I'm looking for concurrence of the council for me to go on that.
I concur.
Thank you, Mr. August. I have two other things. One, one is really a, if I can get, if I can get council to concur to ask staff-
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. In reference to that, do you have an appointment specifically with the two senators?
I do. I do, absolutely do. I have, I have an appointment with, in Senator Feinstein's case, I have an appointment with her Chief of Staff and Legislative Director, and I have an appointment with Senator Boxer, actually, and her Chief of Staff, and Legislative Director.
And to help us out, what is it that you hope to achieve there from those two federal US senators?
The, the timing of this trip coincides with the appropriation process in both the House, and what we're doing is, we're seeking their assistance in finding dollars that have already been appropriated for transportation, environmental issues, and infrastructure, and also to ask them to assist us in any new appropriation that they may see fit to help us out with. In Senator Feinstein's case, her staff has already been out to Quail Valley. We gave them a windshield tour, and a ground tour in 2010, along with a boat tour with Councilmember Nancy Horton from Canyon Lake, to show Senator Feinstein's staff the impact of a significant rain event and the runoff from Quail Valley into the water supply into Canyon Lake. And so, with Melissa Melendez as a help up in Sacramento, and some other efforts with EMWD, this is a great opportunity for the city of Menifee to keep these two projects at the forefront of our list, and we're really making a lot of headway. It's been a slow go, but we're right there to crack the funding nut on some of these.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, that's, thank you for asking that follow-up. This is, this is going to upset, it's going to upset you as much as it did me. It's the law of unintended consequences. SB 407 is a bill that was approved in 2009, and it had a delayed effect to January 1 of 2014. And it has to do with a requirement for homes that are of certain age, 2009 and older, if you put a, if you, if you put a solar panel on your roof, if you take advantage of the HERO program, for example, through WRCOG, or if you put in a energy-efficient pool pump, or if you put in a electric fueling station in your garage, this bill, according to the language, it's got a lot of people concerned, because it's catching people by surprise in terms of its effective date. It was approved in '09, it took effect January 1, and it requires municipalities and county governments to make sure that residents retrofit their residences, residences and businesses with energy-efficient plumbing fixtures, whether that be faucets, showers, shower stalls, pool pumps, spigots, and toilets. And it really is overreaching. And in the language, there appears to be no waivers of it. So, if we could ask staff, and if I could get a second for this, to have staff engage Gonzalez and Sons up in Sacramento, and get us really, what is the impact for the city of Menifee with this bill that was approved in '09, that appears to have taken effect just January 1? Because it impacts our, it impacts substantially our permitting process and a bunch of other things.
I'll second that, but are they going to impose such things as solar panels? What are we pulling out of this? Exactly, how does it affect the person out there, the audience?
If, if a resident had put solar panels on a home that they have now, that was constructed in 2009 or earlier, this bill mandates that they take it further in their home to install these energy-efficient- these energy-efficient fixtures and plumbing in their home. It's really overreaching. It's got a lot of people concerned.
What about those who do not have solar? Is there something that we have to do now?
There is not. It seems to be, well, there's a tripwire in the future in 2017 and another one in 2019. So, those other features that Mr. Edgerton just asked for clarification on, we would need to know what those are, too, because there are some other things that take effect in the future in 2017 and 2019, that we need to know what they are and we need to be prepared for. And if we don't like them, we can maybe find somebody to carry a new piece of legislation to soften it up a little bit. So, it sounds to me like Mr. Edgerton said yes to that. Mr. Denver?
Clearly, the mayor's done more studying on this than I have or anybody I know has. But I was under the impression with a little bit that I know, it wasn't just solar panels, it was any major things like that.
And energy-efficient windows.
Yeah, energy-efficient windows. There was another one that, for instance, if you had put in efficient toilets, efficient it, kind of, I don't remember, but there was several things. So, it affects, my point is, it affects a lot of us.
A lot of people.
And it's scary stuff. It's really Big Brother.
It's like Sacramento, they entice you to take one bite of the apple, and now they want you to take the rest of it as a result of this.
Plus, imagine the lawsuits I'm thinking about, because I have solar panels, forget that. Imagine the lawsuits when the solar panel company and the City of Menifee gave me a permit, that they didn't tell me about all this. So, I think I'll sue Menifee, too, went on, so.
These are good Soviet ideal plans. So, Mr. Johnson, just to be clear, we're not, I'm not looking for an agenda item for action, just a staff report on what the impact is for the future of Menifee and what the impacts may be on the departments, and what our legal obligations are.
We can either give you that back in our monthly, bimonthly report, or separately, but you'll have it from us.
However you want to bring it back. And then the final thing, I'm looking for, this is, I've talked to one other council member about this already, and I've shared this with Mr. Johnson. The county, the county staff is putting forth some recommendations in their, in a general plan amendment number 1119, that it's going to go before, hopefully, well, according to the plan, go to before the Board of Supervisors sometime in March or April. The staff report deals with the unincorporated areas of the county, which we have a substantial amount to the east of us, and this speaks to the development standards of roads. There was a lawsuit that was, went to an appellate court, the appellate court held, and I don't have the court number for you, Ms. Biggs, but the appellate ruling stated that if a municipality or a county has a general plan that states this is the standard, you have to hold the development community to that standard. And so, my understanding of the staff report from the county, that has been held over by the Planning Commission now twice at the county for further review, is that the staff report wants to give the County Board of Supervisors flexibility in the unincorporated areas to lower that road standard from a C to a D for a specified project under a list of specified circumstances. The problem I see in that for the City of Menifee is that this council and the staff here has taken tremendous amounts of measures to approve our capital improvement plan and our general plan to maintain the road standard at C. And so, I've engaged the county, it's mixed input as to what the opinions are there. So, if I could get concurrence from at least one council member for staff to engage the county on this, find out truly what we're dealing with, and if staff feels that the council needs to weigh in on this in forms of, in form of a resolution of opposition to that change, that is my request of staff.
Well, I'll second that, Mr. Mayor. I'll just point out that when staff's working with this issue and speaking myself to one of the supervisors, they pointed out that that is in Jeff Stone's area, and that they will do whatever Jeff chooses to do. So, if staff can zero in on Jeff Stone, that'll probably help us a great deal. I would think Jeff himself, Supervisor Stone, would not support this, and that would be my speculation. And it's a little bit bizarre, I agree with you, Mayor, that is a very bizarre position, because what usually happens, developments come in to the point where, as you grade them, you downgrade the roads, as we've had to do with Newport and Scott. It isn't the other way around, where you start off by saying, well, let's make Scott an F grade, and then we can build according to F. So, this is really odd. I haven't seen this before, but I strongly support your position.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Mr. Denver?
Also, there's another issue, and we've talked about this. I believe we have some very major projects on the east side of Menifee that are half in Menifee and half in the county. And so, having one level of road go through for half of it, and then the other be another level, that's just really preposterous. Or on some of them, there's one on the top that has roads that don't go straight, imagine that. And so, I think this is a real big issue.
Great point. All, do you need any additional direction from us on that, Mr. Johnson?
Not on that one, but if I could return to a prior request of Mr. Edgerton, he started discussion and a request of a campaign finance reform discussion item for next council meeting, and that's a general discussion item that you're going to, okay?
To help out, Mr. Edgerton and I, on the original, the original council, I think if you check the, if you check the minutes and the agenda from November of 2009, or maybe December of 2009, we had some discussions about this. We had a discussion about a conflict of interest code, which we have subsequently adopted since Ms. Biggs has been our attorney, and Mr. Edgerton, the mayor at the time, brought up the matters of campaign finance reform at the local level. So, there may be some value in research, going back to those previous agendas and minutes, to see where we were at with that discussion. Do you think that would be helpful?
All information is helpful.
Mr. Denver?
Is there any way that we could get a staff report on the dementia, have the staff talk to Mr. Edgerton, and get some information on what this topic is going to be about, in some amount of detail, about choices and what's on his mind? The reasoning is, is that if you, if everybody knew, if some of us know what's going on, we can bring people to speak, we can go gather data, we can get our positions ready, we can write speeches, and some of us who have no idea what you're talking about are just going to walk in here and look as stupid as we normally look. And so, I really would recommend that you get us a report so we can get prepared.
Well, I don't think we look stupid up here, to be honest with you, but, you know, if I recall a previous staff report specifically as it relates to, I think, the container issue, or maybe it was the underground detached, I can't remember, one of those two, I think our junior city attorney, Mr. Kwan, did a lot of research in terms of the surround, all the cities in Riverside County, in terms of what their code said for that function, and to get an idea. Maybe, maybe it would be helpful to see if there are other municipalities in the county that do set limits on these matters that we could address and discuss.
Is that the concept, limits? Where I'm going is, that's great. It's limits we're going to talk about. If it's going to be, I'm going to make things up, because I have no idea what you're talking about. If we're going to put a price on people who walk, everybody gets minimum wage for walking, so therefore that's counted, has to be reported in your 700, then I think we ought to be talking, then I think we ought to study that. I think we ought to have the basics of what it is, and then I love the idea of what other cities do, but if we could have a general consensus of what it is we're going to talk about.
Well, what it is that I wanted to bring up is in reference to council business and the appearance of conflict of interest, and is there any way that we can have greater transparency in reference to those issues? For example, the rules and regulations that apply to RCTC, that apply to RTA, that apply to planning commissions and other commissions, is different than for elected officials in cities. And we would have an option of making those conflicts more transparent, in the hope that it would give citizens a better opportunity to make their own decision as to whether or not they felt there were conflicts or not. There are clearly conflicts, in my opinion, but they're simply not transparent, and they should be transparent. And that's what I want to bring up, and see if I can get some approval from my colleagues at the time. Obviously, I'll be making a motion, and obviously, I'll have to have council support, or it won't fly. Are such items controversial, Councilman Denver? Absolutely.
Well, it's not on the agenda tonight, so let's not debate, but there's clarification, I think, that staff needs, but one of the things that Mr. Edgerton is talking about clearly when he references the commissions and committees and JPAs, is there's state law that mandates that elected officials disclose and then recuse themselves when a entity comes before those bodies, where a campaign donation of $250 or more has been given to that elected official. And in fact, today, during the RCTC meeting, where we had a BB&amp;K discussion, four commissioners had to recuse themselves from the discussion and the vote, because they had received campaign donations from that particular law firm in the preceding 12 months, $250 or more. So, I think that's one of the things that we need to have an understanding on, and in reference to, I think, some of the other entities around us, is there other cities that do that? And then what does the City of Menifee want to do, if anything, in the future on that topic?
Okay, so you're looking at, and this confused me as you were laying it out, Deputy Mayor, because I wasn't quite certain where you were going with the conflict of interest issue here. But you're talking, then, about campaign contributions, and whether they create conflicts of interest? That was the focus.
Yes, that's, in other words, contributions in reference to any number of things.
Okay, and I'm assuming, then, that what you're looking for is a review generally of what a local entity can do with regard to campaign regulation at all, which we can certainly give you, and then a review of what is done in Riverside County.
And as you know, it's been a, it's been a topic where I've had an opportunity to teach it, so I know where you're going to be coming from in reference to the legal side and what the courts say. You can't tell somebody they can't accept a contribution, you can't tell somebody they cannot give a contribution. So, in reference to that subject, this isn't on the agenda tonight, but when it is, I want to discuss the point of more transparency. First of all, if you're going to do anything at all, it would have to be, excuse me, you're the city attorney, but it would have to be a voluntary kind of thing. You cannot impose that legally, otherwise you're messing with the First Amendment, and you can't do that.
Some disclosure issues you can require.
I'm talking about transparency, I'm talking about full disclosure. Right now, if I take a contribution on something I'm voting for tonight, most people out there wouldn't know a thing about it. They can dig it up on a 700 form, which most people don't even know exists. So, frankly, I'd like to see the City of Menifee set the bar a little bit higher, and that would be a matter of discussion. I don't really want to get into it tonight, because it's something we're going to agendize, we already have agendized for the next meeting.
There are other communities who have done other things, and we can certainly give you an overview of the options.
Thank you.
Mr. August?
Let me ask Mr. Edgerton, is it possible in our conversation at the next meeting that the topic of public financing might come up? Is it possible?
That's potential, but that wouldn't be any part of my motion next week. It would be maybe part of a discussion. If you're talking about public finance, you're talking about saying, well, maybe the citizens want to ding themselves a dollar or $2 a year, but that's something that would have to be voted on by the citizens. That would, that would take a fair amount of time to unravel over some, more than one meeting, so I won't be going there with a motion.
Just one final question. I know you wanted this to come up at the next meeting, but the mayor apparently will not be here. Is that, I mean, do you want to...
I don't have, I don't have a problem if that discussion goes forward. I'm glad you asked that question, though. Mine's not a question of me not being here.
No, it's just...
Mine is a question of enough time for staff to prepare such a comprehensive report, because it's my perception that two weeks from tonight, it may not address a lot of the stuff that's been asked of tonight on this particular issue, and it may be, we may have to take this piecemeal, maybe we need to do a workshop on it, and really dial in, and really have a good, hearty discussion about it, and take public comment over it. But I have no objection if the item is on the agenda while I'm away, it doesn't matter to me.
The city clerk will tell you that the reports for the meeting are due yesterday, so that's just a consideration. That doesn't mean that those rules can't be bent, but we'll do what we can to come forward.
Well, I'm not looking for some elaborate staff report. I, you know, once it's a matter of discussion, I'll be coming up with my own opinions, and then we'll see if the council is supportive.
Mr. Denver?
So, some of it we can postpone, perhaps.
I heard Councilman Edgerton say he's going to be making a motion next week. I really would like you to be here and put your two cents worth in. If there's any motions to be made, I'm going to make a motion, I'll tell you right now, that we're not going to make a motion the first time we talk about this. This is going to be talked about for a while, and I really don't think that we ought to set this up where the mayor is not here. So, I'd like to post, with everybody's permission, postpone this discussion at least the first time until everybody's here.
Well, again, I appreciate that, but I don't object if it proceeds in a, you know, perhaps, perhaps that it would, if we're going to do it at a regular council meeting, it seems to me that it would flow from a presentation standpoint of staff, and then at another meeting, or get some direction from the council based upon that presentation, on other things to explore, then agendize those to discuss and really hammer them home. And then if there's a policy that, if we need to update the municipal code, we'll put an ordinance in place, and there's going to be a process here, clearly, over this. And so, I don't, again, I don't object if you do it while I'm not here. I mean, I've got some ideas on it myself. In fact, the deputy mayor probably has an email for me from 2009 that has a list of 13 potential campaign finance ideas at a municipality, so I can dust that off easily, too.
Well, I won't be looking for an ordinance. I'll be looking for a sense of the council, and certainly won't be doing anything that the public would be disagreeing with. I'm going to speculate that the public would all probably be unanimous, but I think we're getting into a discussion.
I agree, I agree. Good point.
I would just close with, I don't believe Mr. Edgerton's looking for a staff report. I think he wants to have a general discussion item. Is that correct? With a topic?
Is that true?
Correct?
All right.
Thank you.
Excellent. Clarity is achieved. Are there any other council member requests for agenda items? Hearing none, we are adjourning this meeting to the, we are adjourning this meeting to Wednesday, January 22, 2014.